All right, everyone, welcome to the Tuesday, October 24th meeting with the Aurora Grande City Council. Can we get a roll call, please? Councilmember Seacrest?
Here.
Councilmember Guthrie?
Here.
Councilmember George?
Here.
Mayor Protem Barnich?
Here.
Mayor Ray Russum?
Here.
Would you please silently join me in a moment of reflection? Thank you, and would you please join me in the flag salute? Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. This takes us to item five, agenda review, and I'm looking for the announcement, and I don't have it. So can you... Is this one? Thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Yep, that's the one I was looking for. So regarding item 10A, staff is recommending opening and continuing the notice public hearing to a date certain of November 28th, 2023. Isaac, do we need a motion to that effect?
Mayor, I would, just to open and continue it to the date certain.
All right, for brevity, I will move and make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries, and if there are people here who are to speak on that item, you'll be able to speak during item eight, public comment. So we'll go ahead and take comment if you are here. We don't want you to come down here for nothing. Any other items on item five to move orders or anything like that? Okay, hearing done, we'll proceed as published with the exception of 10A, which will be continued to November 28th. For 5A, we have no closed session announcements. 5B is ordinances, and I'll go ahead and move that all ordinances presented at the meeting shall be read in title only and all further readings be waived.
Second.
We have a motion to second, can we get a roll call, please? Mayor Ray Russum?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Barnich?
Yes.
Councilmember Seacrest?
Yes.
Councilmember George?
Yes.
Councilmember Guthrie?
Yes.
And that takes us straight into our special presentation. So tonight, we have two, 6As, an honorary proclamation recognizing November 2023 as National Native American and Indigenous Peoples' Heritage Month, and I would like to invite Violet Walker to the podium with me.
Good evening. And I'm Elder Slo. Hi.
Welcome. You can come on up if you'd like, or you can stay seated if you'd like, whatever makes you happy. All right. It's a pleasure to meet you. This is an honorary proclamation recognizing November 2023 as National Native American and Indigenous Peoples' Heritage Month, whereas National Native American Heritage Month is also referred to as Indigenous Peoples' Heritage Month and is a time to recognize the history and experiences of indigenous peoples in the United States and to rejoice in the diverse and rich cultures and great contributions of indigenous people and tribes. And whereas Native American Awareness Week began in 1976 and recognition was expanded by Congress and approved by President George Bush in August 1990, designating the month of November as National Native American Heritage Month. And whereas National Native American and Indigenous Peoples' Heritage Month allows us to spread awareness about indigenous people and tribes and to educate people about the various challenges faced by indigenous peoples in the past and today. And whereas indigenous peoples play a critical role in the health and vitality of our great nation, as leaders, advocates, business owners, artists, teachers, writers, courageous members of our armed forces, and so much more, their contributions to our society are cause for celebration and appreciation by all Americans. And whereas the city of Aurora Grande resolves to work side by side with indigenous peoples and tribes to secure stronger, safer communities and safeguard sacred heritage for future generations. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Karen Ray Russum, mayor of the city of Aurora Grande, do hereby proclaim November 2023 as National Native American and Indigenous Peoples' Heritage Month and urge all our citizens to observe this month with gratitude and sensitivity with the use of appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. Thank you so much, and we'd like to invite you to say a few words.
My name is Slo. I'm elder for Northern Chumash Tribe, and I want to thank everybody for making this possible. And everybody have a good evening, and we really appreciate this. And we did bring you some presents I made today.
These are super sacred ancient technology. And one of a kind. Slo had painted you all Christmas ornaments.
Oh, that's so nice. Thank you for that.
These are all, um, you know, treasures that you can add to your family and to your collections and... I think the dollar value is under a dollar, so we're okay.
The sentimental value will be much higher.
So awesome.
Beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You're welcome. And one more thing is that hopefully this time next year, we will also have a Chumash Heritage Marine Sanctuary to celebrate. Today is the last day of public comment. And so in honor of Native American Heritage Month, we hope that you all make a comment and join us in protecting our ocean. And thank you all so much for making this happen.
Thank you. And as is not required but custom, if anyone would like to come forward and speak on this particular item, please come forward now. And seeing no one, we'll close this item and move on to item 6B. And can I have Len Jarrett meet me at the podium for the honorary proclamation declaring November 2023 as National Hospice and Palliative Care Month? To do all the fun stuff tonight.
That's right.
This is an honorary proclamation declaring November 2023 as National Hospice and Palliative Care Month, whereas hospice and palliative care empower people facing a serious or life-limiting illness to live as fully as possible, ensuring people dignity, choice, and quality of life. Whereas the hospice model involves an interdisciplinary, team-oriented approach of treatment, including expert medical care, quality symptom control, and comprehensive pain management as a foundation of care. And whereas providing physical treatment, hospice attends to the patient's emotional, spiritual, and family needs and provides family services like respite care and bereavement counseling. And whereas hospice is one of the sectors that demonstrates how healthcare can and should work its best for its patient, work at its best for its patient. And whereas a growing body of peer-reviewed research indicates that timely access to hospice and palliative care can decrease hospitalizations and emergency room visits and increase quality of life for patients and family caregivers. And whereas every year, more than 1.56 million Americans living with life-limiting illness and their families received care from the nation's hospice programs in communities throughout the United States. And whereas more than 355,000 trained volunteers contribute 16 million hours of service to hospice programs annually in the U.S. And whereas Central Coast Hospice, Dignity Health Hospice, Hospice of San Luis Obispo County, and Willshire Hospice provide hospice care and bereavement counseling respectively to individuals within the county of San Luis Obispo. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Karen Ray Russum, mayor of the city of Aurora Grande, do hereby proclaim November 2023 as National Hospice and Palliative Care Month in Aurora Grande and encourage citizens to increase their understanding and awareness of care at the end of life and to observe this month with appropriate activities and programs.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, city council of Aurora Grande, for proclaiming November as Hospice and Palliative Care Month. My name is Len Jarrett, and I'm a happy, proud board member of Hospice of San Luis Obispo County. In Slo County, we're fortunate to have three medical hospices and one non-medical volunteer hospice, all of who help those at end of life, their families, and the bereaved. Most people understand that a medical hospice is for terminal patients who have less than six months to live and have stopped curative treatment. The patient has chosen palliative or comfort care at home or in a facility. These medical hospice services are covered by insurance, including Medicare. A non-medical volunteer hospice, such as Hospice of San Luis Obispo County, can begin supporting clients long before their illness becomes terminal because we do not charge fees or bill insurance and therefore are not bound by insurance restrictions, which we therefore have more flexibility when and how we can assist clients and their families. For example, we can support a client with dementia, Parkinson's disease, ALS, cancer, and other illnesses for years. The client is matched with one of our trained volunteers who steps in to give caregivers a much-needed break. That's a very important part of what we do, helping caregivers get a break from the duties of caring for sick people, their sick relatives or family members. As you can imagine, caregiving for someone with a long-term illness takes its toll. Without the ability for respite and personal care, older adults aged 65 to 96, caring for a spouse, have a 63% higher risk of death than non-caregivers of the same age. With the ongoing flexibility of our program, our trained volunteers give caregivers the time to get out of the house, go to doctor appointments, and take care of their own health. And when the time comes that medical hospice is necessary, we educate our client and work with one of the medical hospice organizations in our area to make a smooth transition. Hospice of San Luis Obispo County is also a community grief center. We support grieving residents regardless of when, where, or how their loved one died or whether their loved one had been a client of ours. Our grief support offerings include individual and family counseling, support groups, and community grief response, where a counseling team will go to the place of business to facilitate debriefings and assistance to organizations or groups who've lost coworkers or member. You may recall some time back when a San Luis Obispo police officer was murdered making, trying to catch a burglar, and he was 28 years old, left with three little children. Hospice, our hospice, came in and gave grief counseling to the entire police force of San Luis Obispo County. Hospice of San Luis Obispo County is one of 17 non-medical hospices left in the country, and we're proud to have been serving this community since 1977. Thank you again for this proclamation and for allowing me time to explain our services. Thank you.
Thank you for what you do. And again, as is custom, if anyone would like to speak on this item, please come up now. And I should have checked in with Madam Clerk to see if anyone wanted to speak on, let's say, item 6A or B. Any members of the public on Zoom would like to speak on item 6A or 6B, please raise your hand. There are no raised hands. All right, so we'll close public comment on both of those and turn it over to our interim city manager for his communications this evening. Hi, Bill.
Thank you, good evening, mayor and council members. I have a few events that I'd like to highlight for the council and the public. The first is what you see on the screen, it's the Marathon Monster Mash. That's a great Halloween event that our rec services department puts on. It's a three-day event, you can see, and there'll be a lot of activities, so we're excited to have that over at Elm Street Park. And our second is coming up on Tuesday on Halloween. It's Halloween in the Village, and everyone's pretty familiar with that for the most part. We have lots of kids come, literally probably thousands. And that event is from 4:00 to 6:00 on Tuesday. We closed the street in the village, and we have a lot of safety measures in place so that we can have a great event, a safe event. And then, just as a reminder, coming up is the Holiday Parade at the beginning of December. That's December 3rd, and I'll bring this one back up, and I have some other events that I'll highlight at our next meeting. But the Holiday Parade, Sunday, December 3rd, starts at 5:00, and applications to be in the parade are being taken now. It's on our city's website, you can submit an application, auragrande.org, under our Recreation Services tab there. And yeah, we're looking forward to another great event there. I was going to provide an update on the Tally Ho Creek work. I'd like to do that at our next meeting where I'll have some more advanced pictures so that it'll explain the project a little bit more and give the council and the public some more information than the intermediate pictures that are still advancing through the project. So that ends my report, and I can answer any questions you have.
Let's check in with the council and see, any questions of city manager? All right, then we'll open... Yeah, oh, sorry. Not, I just have a question for the city manager that I think maybe would be okay to ask here, but could you give us a really brief update, since I've had some inquiries on the work in the village?
Sure.
Okay.
Our city engineer's here, but I can give you some information as well. There's a lot of things going on in the village, we're trying to time them. And I think the most, I guess impactful to the community around the village is the night work that we're doing for the replacement of our tile bands, and we're replacing those with pavers. There's really just no easy way to do that. Doing the work during the day was presenting some real safety problems for pedestrians, for the kids that get out of the junior high every day. And so we elected with the contractor to do that work at night, but that doesn't make it much easier either on a noise impact level. On the safety, it's very much, much more, much safer, much more... We're able to advance that project forward as well because we don't have the safety issues. But the noise impacts are not fun, we realize that. So we're trying to condense that project down and get it done quickly so that we don't have to do that again for another 50 years or so. But then we also have some other projects coming online after that. You can see that our parklets have been moved, that industrial K-rail is gone. We have the decorative concrete barriers that we've shown your council a few times. We're going to put that back after, well, we're going to be postponing our slurry seal as well. So this is, it's going to get into some deeper things, but...
It's okay, you can stop whenever.
No, keep going, keep going.
So we were going to do the slurry seal right after the sidewalk work. What we're finding is the temperature that we're encountering during the day is too low. So we need about a 60 degrees constant temperature on the ground and in the air, and it's going to be fluctuating by the time that we start to get into that project. And when you do that, when you have such a low temperature at varying points of the day, it makes the quality of the slurry seal much less durable. So Paso Robles, Atascadero, and us, and a couple other cities are electing to postpone that into the spring where it's warmer, and when we do lay that material down, it's going to be much more quality, higher quality, and much more durable into the future. So that's one thing that we're postponing in that area.
Does that postpone the parklets?
We're going to continue on placing the parklets, and we may need to move those, although what we've been, what Shannon and I have been discussing is we would put the parklets all back in place, make them look very nice, have the plants in the corner areas, and then we would slurry seal around the parklets. So we'd go right up to the edge of the concrete all around so it wouldn't be noticeable from the street or from traffic, and then we wouldn't have to move them again. Slurry seal's about a 3/8 inch of material, so we feel like we can do that without disrupting any of the businesses and still get the slurry seal down and the striping down in the spring. So that's a lot of information. We're communicating with our businesses, Shannon is doing a great job at that, and we're going to, we can come back with an update again as we proceed and we start to make more headway on the projects in the village and especially the tile band work.
So just two questions. So just remind me again, and for the public, when are the parklets set to be placed back together or started to be put back together?
That's a great question. November 14th is what I'm getting from...
Oz was in the background, behind the curtain.
Thank you for that. We have a lot of things going on, and some things are moving as we speak, and so the dates are kind of tentative, but we're still making a lot of headway. We're going to be able to complete these projects in the near future.
Okay, awesome. And then since the, I had a couple of inquiries on the night noise in some neighborhoods where it kind of carries, I haven't heard from them after we put the noise measures in place. So I think maybe that was helpful, I hope.
I think it's helpful, I think we still have a person or two that is still being impacted, but we're still, we're trying to put noise attenuation boards and material around the saw cutting and limiting the jackhammering, but we're just going to try to break through that, no pun intended, and move through that, and then just have it done and move into the softer asphalt work that we're going to be doing in the crosswalks.
Thank you, Bill. All right, any other questions of city manager? All right, we'll open up public comment. If anyone would like to comment or ask a question about item 6C, now would be the time. And seeing no one come forward, we'll check in with the city clerk. Any members of the public on Zoom that would like to make a comment, please raise your hand. There are no raised hands. All right, so we'll close that, and we'll move forward to city council reports, and I'm up first. CJPIA has not met, Central Coast Blue has not met, 5 Cities Fire Authority did meet, and I would trust that perhaps, that you take such great notes. Did you take notes? Yes, she takes such better notes than I do. So I'm going to leave it to councilmember George. The San Luis Obispo County Mayor's meeting was attended on my behalf by councilmember Guthrie, so I'll turn that over to him. And sanitation district was also attended by councilmember George. So that made mine short and sweet, and I'll turn it over to Mayor Protem.
Thank you. The Audit Committee has not met, a Homeless Services Oversight Council did not meet, Zone 3 Water Advisory Board did meet while I was out of town, and I believe Mayor Ray Russum...
Oh, I thought, I thought that I had, I did attend, and I thought I had already reported out on that.
Oh, maybe, okay.
And the upshot of it was, the only major thing was that they changed the meeting to daytime meetings.
Okay, maybe that was the meeting when I wasn't here. That's, okay, so I did see an email to daytime meetings. Okay, I'll have to circle back with you on that, thank you. That was it, that was it, it was Jermaine to AG, really?
Yeah.
Okay.
It was...
Short and sweet?
It was less than 30 minutes long.
Oh, wow, okay. Thank you for attending, and that's all my reporting out.
And nothing, and just to back that up too, we, on our monthly water reports, we're getting some of the same information, so. Councilmember George?
Thank you, mayor. I will start with 5 Cities Fire Authority. We met on the 16th, and the board discussed parameters for which to give guidance to staff to go back and negotiate with the county for Oceana Fire Services. And there are five different parameters that we considered, the length of the term, the staffing level, the fire prevention services, use of Station 3, and the cost. We also voted to have Chief Lieberman remain on as interim fire chief between December 30th and February 29th, as we look for a new fire chief, and recruitment is open and will close on November 17th. And we have two battalion chief announcements. We have one new hire, Ryan Byrd, and he'll have a pending on November 9th. And Ricky Heath will be retiring after 30 years of fire service locally here. So we wish Mr. Heath well, and that is fire, unless I missed anything.
No, I think you hit it.
Okay. Tourism Board did not meet, the Visit SloCal did not meet. Sand District met on October 4th. We approved a couple of random basic contracts. The main meeting consisted of just an update on the redundancy project secondary clarifier damage. The majority of the damage was caused by concrete failure in the newly constructed clarifier. It was an oversight during the design review process, they didn't catch it. So they will be removing 10 inches of slab, of concrete slab, 6 inches of gravel, and then reinforcing with 16 inches of concrete. And that should hopefully take care of the issue. It will set us back about eight months. And the last announcement was that the district has been servicing our area for 60 years.
And...
No pomp and circumstance, I mean, 60 years deserved at least a little confetti popper or something.
So I haven't had a chance to debrief with you on that. So what they were doing between the last time I went and when councilmember George went was they were doing... The upshot was, when they poured the concrete slab, they... I don't know if the word neglected, but for whatever reason, did not include the compound that prevents shrinkage to the concrete. And they had caught that error by the time they'd done the sides, but not the bottom. And so there was a discussion about whether it was that that caused the problem or the engineering that caused the problem. So I was so excited to hear what you were going to say tonight. So it sounds like what we did was we had to source the exact compounds that were used in the concrete and then test the shrinkage to see if it stayed within parameters. It sounds like it did not, and that the damage was attributed to the concrete. All right, perfect. Thank you.
The beauty is they don't have to take everything apart. They can just dig out the slab and replace it. The concern was they would have had to replace the... This, what is that?
Sides, walls?
Yes, there's a name for it.
The thingy, the round, yes, the round thingy.
There was a swirler damage, but that was able to be repaired under warranty.
Oh.
And those are my updates, thank you.
The swirlers like a giant squeegee that goes around the bottom, and it had tilted by an inch and got all messed up. Okay, councilmember Guthrie is up next. Mike?
So the RAC did not meet again this month. We will be meeting next month for the first time in a couple of months.
You always say that.
Well, they miss three meetings a year, maybe four, it breaks my heart. Actually, RAC has gone really well, so I just, thanks to the... So Council SloCog. So the decision on their county-wide sales tax been pushed off until April or May, when they get some more information, and they did say they're going to bring it back to the cities for approval, though technically I don't think we have to, we get to approval, but it sounds like they are going to run it by every city for approval.
Are they going to poll in between?
Yes, they're doing more polling. I think they're polling cities.
Are they going to poll actual taxpayers?
Well, they've already polled.
Oh, they did?
They've done, yeah, I think, so they're doing more polling, but I think it's really, they've been, and able to get as much public outreach as they wanted, or maybe weren't getting the response that they wanted. And so they're working on that piece of it, but...
Interesting.
They had very successful Walk to School Day, over 6,000 county kids, or kids countywide. The criteria for unmet transit needs, which, you know, they have these four criteria, and you had to hit all four of them before they even did a quote "high-level review." Just so happens that almost nothing ever gets reviewed. So they've kicked that back so it only needs to meet three of those four criteria. Don't ask me what they are right now, but they are, they're there. So I think we'll see a lot more staff review of possibilities for transit because it's very hard to hit all four criteria. It still has to be doable and financially doable, but... It still has to be doable and financial, financially doable, but, but there is gonna be a lot more review of it, because we just were never, never looking at almost anything. I guess I should just leave these on. We also looked at a review of the Betterment Grants. If you'll remember that we got $750,000 for doing a project out on Halcyon, which then got folded into the complete streets. Seems like a lot of this stuff either has financial problems and therefore looking for more funding, or has time-constrained problems similar to what we're, we're doing and delaying the project. So I think none of them have been completed, but a couple of them are, are in motion, and several of them have already been sort of reassigned. So we will be looking at next year's grant funding, I think the December meeting, I think in the very next meeting. I know, you know, some ideas for some grant, some parts of that we may apply for from here as well. And this is just, they, they put together the agreement between all the agencies, Pismo, Slow Cog, Caltrans for the Pismo corridor improvement, where they're gonna add the temporary lane. I'll just add here, I always wondered why it was a temporary lane. I thought that was kind of a hustle, but it's really so they don't have to cut the rock. It's a narrower lane than normal, and therefore they will not have to chip away that big rock that's, that's right in the middle of it. So that's, that's the reason why this is so financial, such a financial improvement.
Why did, how long does it have to be temporary? Can it be temporary?
Oh, it's temporary forever, it's just temporary during the day.
Oh.
So, so during rush hour it's open, and out of rush hour it's closed. It's not just, not just a diamond lane or anything like that, it's literally closed, and for that reason, because they don't have a shoulder. So that, that's why they're able to do a narrower, a narrower. We see the draft annual report, couple highlights, 65 million for that mobility lane project I just mentioned, and another 36 million in active transportation, which includes, for instance, our Halcyon Complete Streets project, and number of other things, but none that are really, really critical to us right now.
Did I hear you write 63 million for that temporary lane?
65 million.
65? I'll do it for six.
When they, when they put out the RFP. Can put in your.
Your application.
I'll, I'll make sure you're important.
Wow.
Yeah, I, I'll be surprised if it stays there, but, so what's next here? Reach has not met. So I did do the APCD meeting. The highlighter present, was a presentation by Lynn Russell with the Scripps Institute with a sort of an alternative view on how much dust is actually produced from the writing area in Oceano Dunes. I'll just say it was a lively discussion. I think I would say the basic difference here is, I heard it, granted it was, you know, it's a hundred-page report or something, but as I heard it is, in her view, a significant part of what has been identified as dust is actually vapor that's trapped in, in, in the other dust. And so it's a difference of opinion of, she has, 70% of what she measured doesn't register on any of what they're testing for, and therefore her position is that it's likely water vapor.
Oh, boy.
I will say that's not APCD staff's position, which several people made very clear, but, but that's just, that's just my, my reading of it as a layman and two-time tender now, you know? As you guys may know, my, my other time that I attended was when we adopted the dust rule. Yeah, real fun. So going on to the mayor's meeting, I'm gonna sit on here. So we had a nice presentation from the Mexican consulate, comes out of Oxnard, which was, which was nice, a lot of interesting data about especially where legal immigration is actually coming from in Mexico. I'm surprised that it's way down south, that where most of the immigration comes from, and that's something they work with them on those, those immigrants who are, even some immigrants who are here illegally, working with them to make, work their visas and those kinds of things. And then we had a presentation from, from Dave Mullenex on the League of Cities. He filled us in on the, the three big, big items. So ACA 13, which is, which is the, if, the requirement that, that will be an initiative next year, by the way, will be in November, at one time they talked about it being in March, so I think I reported that. Well, if it's a two-thirds vote, then you need to get a two-thirds vote to pass it. And then AC, ACA 1 is the 55% for infrastructure, two separate bills, two separate items, so they have to, or two separate initiatives, so they have to be separate. And some discussion about the CBRT, which is the effort to make everything a vote of the people. I think its major point there is that, independent of how you may feel about fees and taxes and those kinds of things, that the litigation potential in it is just very open-ended. It'd make the ADA issues that we had a few years ago pale in comparison. Just every, everything the city ever did would now be, would now, could, could end up in litigation.
There's a theory on that, by the way.
Okay.
That, as Dave has expressed it at former mayor's meetings, is there are, I think the number is six extremely large developers in the LA area who are kind of forcing this and trying to force a, a negotiation.
Oh, yeah.
With the state, and that this is their attempt to do that. One of them involves Mickey Mouse, another one involves baseball.
Oh, yeah.
But these are really, really, really big companies behind this, not just the California Business Roundtable. So it'll be interesting to see what gets negotiated between now and then, as you said, the litigation potential is so high.
Well, I, I think based on, on some of the, sort of the incompleteness of it, that there is, the league has joined with several labor unions and a number of people in, in litigating in court, whether it's even a legal initiative, because there are so many, it's trying to do so many things at once, and a number of other things. That won't, nobody will know that till June. Why, why it's getting litigated now, I don't know, not a year ago, but, so, but, but its main point is we're gonna have to be prepared to, to, to fund that, you know, that campaign as well as the other two campaigns, and, and really, really be pushing that forward, even if in June it might get TKOed, but you need to be prepared for that. And I think.
IWMA?
Oh, yeah, IWMA, thanks. So IWMA, we did adopt the formal agreement with the county for them to come back in.
One seat?
One seat. And we didn't make them pay any penalties, there was some people suggesting that, but it is, I think it's six months, you can't just bail out in 30 days like you could last time. I think it's six months, but it, but it might be a year. But that will come back to each of the cities now for approval. We approved it there so that it wouldn't be held up if it sort of takes a while to get to all seven cities. So we, we should see that, I'm gonna say shortly, and we'll, you know, assuming it's just a majority of the cities, and I guess there's some special districts as well, but it's just a simple majority would, would, even if a few of them voted against, I can't imagine they would, since we should be looking at another small savings from, from that as well. Thank you.
Councilmember Seacrest?
Well, since Councilmember Guthrie appeared for me, and thank you so much, at their Pollution Control District Board meeting, and I think he usually says, it's not, there's nothing controversial on the agenda, is there? Oh, no. But there's, there's nothing, I read it, I thought, oh, that's bad, but there's nothing I could do, so thank you so much. And I don't have any updates on South County Chamber of Commerce, so.
All right, so that includes our city council reports, and let's move forward to item eight. This is community comments and suggestions, and this is normally only items that are not on tonight's agenda to come forth. This is your chance to talk to the city council about anything that is within our jurisdiction, but we're gonna include item 10A here, just in case there's anybody here to speak on that, even though we have continued that to a date certain in late November. So if you would like to speak on either item 10A or any item not on the agenda, now's the time to come forward.
So you can tell me if this is not the right time. I don't know what agenda item 10A is, but I came to talk about the noise, and I know you apparently.
Now's the time, go ahead.
Okay, I can do that? Okay, great. Thank you. Yes, I would like to vehemently protest against the noise of the construction that has been happening. I live a half a block from here, and first of all, I was not notified of this project at all. Previously, in other construction projects, general projects that have happened, we've been notified, and there's also, like, the planning commission has notified us, and we've had a chance to respond to what was, what is going to be happening, and this, nothing like that occurred at all in this, in this project. But the main thing is that I can't believe that in general a project is happening that would, as its, you know, primary thing, directly affect the health and the well-being of our, of the citizens, of me. That what you're doing by having all this loud noise is, for a month, I cannot sleep. How can I sleep? And if you look at the, at all of the data about sleep, even if you can fall asleep and you have hot, loud noises happening, that affects your sleep. And it, and what happens is your, it releases cortisol into your system, your blood pressure goes up, inflammation rises. This is already affecting my health, because I have an autoimmune disease that is affected by that increase in cortisol and inflammation. And there's nothing I can do about it. There's, you know, I, I've complained, and I, I just can't believe, I, I just, I just can't believe I have to fight for sleep. It is a necessity of life. Without sleep, you die. It is, you need food, you need water, and you need sleep. And you are saying for a month that I don't get sleep. And I, I just can't believe it. And I know, I talked to the city engineer, and she said, we're putting these panels around the jackhammer. Well, I came out here last night, no panels. The site supervisor said, it doesn't work, it's, it's worthless. And so to me, these are just things to kind of placate me, you know? And, and that is, I just, I feel like so disrespected, and, and that you, that, you know, as, as much as I can understand that it's easier, that you're interested in the safety of the students and of the other pedestrians in the area, and I understand that, but those are all potential problems that could happen. In, in putting forward the project in the way that it has and having the night construction, that is, and in the direct result of that action is harming people. You are harming people. And I just don't think that's right. In fact, I think it's wrong. I think it's morally wrong, because you should do no harm to people as, you know, the first, the first matter of business. After that, mitigate problems, after that, you know, try to maximize the, the things, the good for all. And so I just want to put that out there, and that's my time. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on items not on tonight's agenda or item 10A?
I feel you.
It helps. Hi, my name is Mike Harris, and I was supposed to be on tonight's agenda to have my item presented to you guys, and you guys could vote. At 3:45, I was told that it would be continued, and I didn't, I stated, I didn't believe that this item should be continued. It has been 271 days since I submitted my application, and it's been 372 days since Shane Taylor was notified of our request by, for a well by the county health department. I only received the staff report on Friday afternoon, and I was ready to make my case tonight. After 271 days, why should the city staff get to delay answering public city council questions about my well application? I don't believe the city staff should be able to use this time to rewrite their staff report or find new justifications to support a decision that was already made. The average time for city council to vote on a well application is around 40 days after the application is received. In 1971, when the original water well ordinance was passed, city code mandated the process be completed in 30 days. And, you know, I, I don't mind if it takes longer, obviously, but my, my situation is completely different. Something different has happened here. I believe that, you know, the question is, has my application been treated differently than other applicants? And I think there's no doubt the answer is yes. However, city staff argues that nothing about me or my parcel is relevant to their determination of practicality and feasibility, and thus whether I'm able to be approved for a well or not. I was told that the city needs a continuance because of the letter that my attorney wrote and the report that I created, and that there were new arguments. There are no new arguments, none of the data is new. You know, I mean, I'm, I don't work for the city, I haven't processed other well applications, but I know that there's nothing new there. In fact, all the information I got was either publicly available or has happened during this process that I've been going through. So there's nothing new here. And the information should have been known by the city staff, well, the information either is known, or it definitely should be known. The fundamental problem with the entire process is that someone in the city staff decided to override other city staff and change the position of the city at that point in time, which was on or about May 1st of this year. The city was no longer interested in any real discussions with me. They had already made the, their decision about whether I should have a well or not, and the only question was how they would justify it. I have requested a copy of the staff report that was distributed by Patrick Holub the week before March 20th several times, once in a formal public records request. The report has never been provided to me, and there's no exemption, not even the deliberative process exemption that should allow you to, to keep this document from me. If it is actually practical and feasible to get service from the city water system, then no continuance would be needed. By definition, it would, if it was practical and feasible, then that would lend itself to a simple argument that would be easy to defend. And if I can, I'd like a little bit more time.
We need to go on with the meeting, but you're gonna have your chance, and it's, remember that it's continued, so you're gonna be able to present this to us ahead of time.
Right, and I can't be here. I can't be here on that date.
You are welcome to present that and leave that with the city clerk as well, and that can get to us at that time, you can, what you have written there.
Oh, I don't, yeah, this is not my presentation for the.
Okay, so for now, we're gonna close, we're gonna keep you to public comment, it's fair to everyone, but again, you're gonna get another crack at it when it comes ahead of us.
I can't be here.
Then perhaps someone can be your designee.
Really?
Oh, that's a good ques, thank you. Mayor Protem reminds me that we have a Zoom option available as well.
Yeah, I, I don't think that's good enough, but.
Anyone else like to make public comment on items not on tonight's agenda or 10A?
Hello, my name is Richard Burdy, and I'm a civil engineer that has been hired by the Harris family to assist with the well application along with other engineering-related items on the property. I would like to just say that, that I see several environmental and engineering-related concerns that are the result of the proposal that, to connect the water line to the top of the tank at the top of the property, if you're familiar with the property. I would also like to say that staff's argument that it's practical and feasible to connect to a water supply at the top of the property was determined without any standardized method or objective, or objectivity arriving at this conclusion. As a result, they have fallen back on the argument that it's the proximity, proximity of the tank to the property line, and that's it, that confirms feasibility. In past staff reports regarding well applications, cost was always used as a justification that a well should be approved. It also seems, it also seemed to originally be staff's understanding that cost was the primary factor in determining practicality. As Patrick Holub moved forward with preparing the original staff report prepared in March, he requested us to provide a cost comparison for installation of the well versus connecting to the tank on March 9th. This is through email. In fact, he actually referred to it as a feasibility calculation and not a cost estimate. Emails from Patrick confirmed that the original report was written in favor of approving the well, and it was evident that cost was his primary factor. Corresponding with city staff also confirms that they're aware of the environmental concerns related to developing the property. In fact, the proposed connection that is being made by city staff is in direct violation of its own, you know, tree ordinance, as well as the open space designation of the property's perimeter. I would ask council, how can the city both claim that the property contains valuable environmental resources with, worthy of open space designation, and at the same time require the property owner to trench a water line through its habitat at an estimated eight times the cost? I see significant concerns to oak trees and habitat, as well as long-term erosion concerns if that plan would move forward. City staff moved to continue this item because despite having over six months to solidify their argument for practical and feasible, they are still unable to make the case convincingly. The information provided today by Mike Harris and his legal counsel is not new to city staff and has been articulated twice before to both staff and council members, once in an email crafted by myself on May 15th and again by Mike Harris on July 20th. I, I would agree that Mike is being treated based on what I've seen in past staff reports regarding well applications, and I would hope the council would consider that. Thank you. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to come forward on items not on tonight's agenda or 10A? Okay, seeing no one in house, we'll check in with the city clerk. Online, check in online. Your time's up, Jessica.
I know my time. All right, if any members of the public on Zoom would like to make a comment, please raise your hand. There are no raised hands.
Okay, so we'll close public comment, and we have a number of questions here. So first for Bill or for Shannon. It wasn't directly asked as a question, but it's implied as a question, so I want to just go ahead and address it, which is why was there no planning commission hearing on the work that we were going to be doing in the village and no noticing that went out as would normally happen with a project of some sort or an application of some sort?
That's a great question. The planning commission is not notified. Well, let me back up. The planning commission is not really involved with this type of project. It's a sidewalk project, and it doesn't require a permit that goes through or needs to be approved through the planning commission.
And can you, do you have a date by which that will be done?
I can have Shannon come up. She, she, we were just talking about that today, and I think she's nailed down a close, a close date that we're going to be completed with this type of work.
Thank you, mayor and council. I do have some information to provide in terms of the timing of this project. It's a bit of a unique project, so stepping into it, you never know what you're going to get into as far as how long it's going to take. But in terms of how far we've gone on the project, it was started actually the night of the last council meeting. So we have had 10 working nights since the beginning of the project. In those 10 working nights, we've, so there are 144 sidewalk bands. In there, we saw cut 100 of them, and we've done the jackhammering or the demolition of an, of 74 of them. So we're already more than halfway through on the noisiest portion of the project. But if you assume that since we're, say, halfway through on that, and it was 10 working nights to get to that point, it'll be 10 additional working nights in order to complete the noisiest part of that work. In addition, there are 54 planters. We've saw cut 25 of them and demoed 16, so we'll continue moving through that. And then there are eight crosswalks. We've started saw cutting two of them. Saw cutting of the crosswalks, it's asphalt, not concrete, so it's, it's, there's still noise associated with it, but not nearly as much. And then there are, there's one curb ramp in the village that needs to be completed. We're anticipating that the noisy portion of the project will be another two to three weeks, but that the project will continue for another week or so after that for the completion of the work, the laying of titles and the cleanup and the finalization of the, of the bands themselves. So I'm hoping that that provides you some information about the timing that we anticipate for the remainder of the project.
It does. And then there was, it's a, it's a question and a statement, but I think it's worth having staff comment on. How do we choose between the health and safety of one group over another? That you, you talked about the, you know, the daytime versus nighttime, and there's no good answer there. And so how do you make that determination when you're weighing one versus the other?
That's, that's a difficult scenario for us. We make the determination based on the amount of people that we would encounter through a project. So we, we, we obviously have a lot of people that live around the village, but we also have a lot of kids and pedestrians that are going to be trying to walk through the village, and they won't be able to because we have to close the sidewalk due to some heavy equipment work that's going to take place. So it's a really probability of someone getting injured, and it's very high when you're, have kids and a lot of people in the area. So we use a probability scenario that we talk about, and we talk about with the contractor, and we make a decision, a hard decision. It's not something that we take lightly, but we make a decision to avoid those injuries or possible injuries and the issues that we would definitely face if we were to do the work during the day.
Mayor Protem, you look like you were going to ask a question.
Well, I just have a question. I, and this might, I don't know the, the ins and outs of the whole project. I know a little bit. I've seen some of it and walked by some of it that's been done. But would there have been a way, or is there a way to sort of, kind of encapsulize parts of the project so that some could be done during the day? Like you close half a street, or you close a portion of the street? And I know, I can already see that there would be issues with the businesses because if you close the sidewalk completely, you know, and you detour the pedestrians on the other side, then those businesses aren't going to have business. But that might be a way in portions to maybe try to break down those three weeks? I don't know.
Yeah, that, that's a great suggestion. We'll take a look at that, but you're, you're correct. The businesses, we interfaced with them. We interfaced with as many residents as possible. I'm, I'm, I'm not sure how we, we missed the commenter, but the businesses were really emphatic on being able to be open, being able to, for patrons to access their business, so we took that into consideration as well. So there's a lot of factors in there, but we can take a look at closing portions or doing some work in the early hours of the morning, but, you know, we'll be faced with the same dilemma that we're in now, is just impacting people because of the project that we're doing to try to improve and make the village a safer place.
All right. And although the applicant for 10A has left, I'm still going to address his concerns with regard to, he asked, why was it continued and why was the staff report released Friday? I hear that so often. That is absolutely normal procedure, but I wanted to give both Isaac and you a chance to address those concerns and let the public know why that happened at late, at this late hour, when it had been 270-something days. Like, why did this happen today?
Right. I can make a few comments, and then Isaac can obviously fill in there. But you're correct, Friday is the day that we release our staff reports to the public. We have to do that all at one time. We can't release the staff report in a staggered fashion because people would get it at different times and have, you know, we'd encounter different issues of equity and people having information before other people. So we do that staff report release on Friday mornings. So the other question was about why we're continuing it. The main reason that we're continuing it is because of the amount of information that we received at about 12:45 today from the applicant's attorney. There is information in that that we're familiar with, although the attorney is, is arguing different perspectives and asking several questions and having several scenarios that we need to review so that we can respond to those in an appropriate and accurate way. So if we were to do that today, we would just be doing that in front of everyone. It would take a long time. It may not be as accurate because we're doing it in real time. We'd like to have the time to discuss with our staff team, go over the questions that the attorneys asked, go over the scenarios that have been placed in that document, and then be able to respond to those in a, in an accurate, in a clear and concise way as well. So those are my comments on that. Hopefully that answers the questions, but if, Isaac, if you have anything you'd like to add, that would be good.
I think our interim city manager summed it up nicely in terms of the, the continuance and the decision to set it for a date certain. I think staff will certainly be in touch with applicant's team on that date to ensure applicant has the right for their application to, to appear. And I would just note, in case our CDD director has anything to add, but my understanding is the city's had a series of meetings with applicant in advance of when the agenda was published to discuss city's position so that it wouldn't be such a short timeframe between when the agenda went live and, and today's hearing.
I have a question for you with regard to the date that was, that was mentioned. He said repeatedly that he was unable to make that date. So can we reach out to him and come out with a date that would work better for him, since he expressed a desire to be here in person? Because that date was certainly sprung upon him this evening, and I can understand his, him being upset about that.
Yes. So we've put the date out of November 24th?
Whatever.
28th, thank you. 28th. If, we'll, we'll talk with him some more. Brian had a discussion with him at the approximate time that he stated, about 3:45. And if there's a better date that he can be here, we'll certainly accommodate that.
Great, so you can reach out to him perhaps tomorrow or later this evening? All right, excellent. Thank you. All right, so we have public comment closed. This takes us to item nine. This is our consent agenda, and tonight collectively, we only have a few items tonight, items 9A through 9C. Does anyone have any questions or an item to be pulled for separate consideration? All right, seeing no one, we'll go ahead and open up public comment on items 9A through And seeing no one in chambers, we'll check in with the city clerk.
If any members of the public on Zoom would like to make a comment, please raise your There are no raised hands.
All right, we'll close public comment and bring her back around to the council for comment and possible motion and action.
Madam mayor, I would move approval of items 9A through 9C.
Second. We have a motion of second. Any discussion? We need a roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Barnet?
Yes.
Councilmember George?
Yes.
Councilmember Seacrest?
Yes.
Councilmember Guthrie?
Yes.
Mayor Vaybresson?
Yes. This takes us to our items 10 tonight. 10A has been continued to, for now, a date in late November. So we'll go forward to item 10B. This is consideration of a resolution accepting a donation of time and materials for the second phase of the painting of the utility boxes citywide and waiving encroachment permit fees. The staff project number is 23007, and the applicant is Shirley Horacek Arroyo Grande Public Art. And Mr., not Mr. Pedrati. Hello?
I will, yeah, I'll give a quick intro. Brian Pedrati, community development director. This is Shayna Groppen. She is our assistant planner, and will give the presentation tonight on the utility box project.
Good evening, council members. Thank you for that introduction. So tonight I have, sorry. Got to start, got to start the presentation. Excellent. All right. Well, tonight I have for your consideration, the acceptance of donation of time and materials and the waiver of encroachment permit fees associated with the painting of utility boxes in the city. So to give you guys a brief background, in 2002, council first approved the art in public places, which is the first public art program that the city approved. Moving forward to 2013, Arroyo Grande Public Art was formed as part of Arroyo Grande in Bloom, which is a nonprofit organization led by volunteers. Just in 2021, we updated our guidelines to limit the process to non-residentially zoned private property. And then in 2022, Phase 1 of the utility box painting project was accepted by council. So that was just about a year ago. We completed Phase 1 of this project, and that was for the painting of four utility boxes. So just wanted to give you guys an update on how Phase 1 went. You can see below, these are the four painted utility boxes that are featured in the city. Hopefully you guys have been able to see them driving around or moving around in the city. I know I've seen them, and I think that they, they stand out nicely. It's a great addition to the community. And then just to briefly talk about the review process. So Arroyo Grande Public Art published their request for proposals and obtained designs from local artists. That was earlier this summer. And so we're kind of, we're at Phase 2 now, city where I'm presenting to city council. And this, we are conducting our public hearing, and assuming that everything goes according to plan, you'll accept the donation of time and materials and waive encroachment permit fees. And then the final step in the review process would be that Arroyo Grande Public Art Review Panel, which is separate from AGPA, will provide final approval of the artwork. So this, this panel consists of representatives from the property owner. So since we're talking about utility boxes, it has staff members from the city, and it also compose, is comprised of AGPA members, Architectural Review Committee members, members from Chamber of Commerce, and South County Historical Society. They will provide final approval once we have given them a recommendation. All right. And then just briefly to talk about the request for proposals that went out. So a network of around 650 different artists were contacted, and around 10 designs were submitted. And of those 10 designs, I have four to show to you tonight. And the next round, which this is essentially thought to be a three, three-phase project, the next round will also require a new RFP. So more artists will hopefully be, be reached, and we hope to see even more submittals in the final, final iteration of this project. All right. Now to, to talk about the artwork itself. So one of our first submittals that we have to review is a title, entitled Butterflies by the artist Amy Ostray. And this is proposed for the southeast corner of Fair Oaks Avenue and Valley Road. I also would like to mention that preferred locations were recommended by staff at a staff advisory committee meeting, which was held August 21st, 2023. So these are the, the art, this is the artwork that was presented, and staff provided recommendations based on a few different criteria to recommend where different artworks should be featured. This is the art piece Flowers by Jenny Chang, and this is proposed for the northeast corner of North Halcyon and East Grand Avenue. Next, we have Jacaranda, which is painted by Deborah Lord, and this is proposed for the northeast corner of Rancho Parkway and West Branch. And then finally, we have Butterflies, also by Amy Ostray, and this is proposed for the northwest corner of Traffic Way and West Branch Street. I would also like to note that actually five utility boxes were presented as options for this, for this project. And of those five boxes, one box was identified as being least suitable for painting, and that is due to the fact that it was identified that it will either be removed or destroyed in the pre-construction phase of our Halcyon Complete Streets project. So to avoid having someone paint something that will then later be destroyed, we eliminated that as an option, kind of right off the bat. All right. So the recommended action is conducting a public hearing and receiving public comment, and with the hopes that we'll adopt the attached resolution, accepting the donation of approximately $5,000 in time and materials, which is to be donated by the artists, and to waive the associated encroachment permit fees. So for each of the four boxes, it is $180 totaling to 720. And that is it. We do have the applicant representative Shirley Horacek in, in the building today, so if you have any specific questions for AGPA, I'll open that up now, but I'm also open to answering any questions. Thank you.
All right, we'll check in with council. Yes?
Can I make one clarification? The, the one at the end was called strawberries, not butterflies.
Oh. So, sorry. My apologies.
That'd be some pretty cool thing to see some flying strawberries, though.
Add a couple wings.
All right, let's check in with council. Councilmember Seacrest, any questions?
No.
Councilmember George?
Yes, just one clarifying question. First of all, nice to meet you, Shayna.
Yes.
Nice to meet you. Welcome to the city. I don't know how long you've been here, but your first presentation, you did wonderful. Question for you. So will there, there's five boxes total. One box we're not going to consider because it's going to be demoed when we do the Halcyon Complete Streets. So we have four boxes, and we have three rounds of RFPs that are going to go out. So this is just the results from the first round? I'm just trying to understand.
Right. So this is actually the, the second iteration of this project. So in October of 2022, the first, that was the first round of the RFP that went out. So to clarify, a new RFP, a new request for proposals will be issued for each round, and there have been 12 boxes identified within the city.
Understood.
Yes.
Understood. Thank you. Beautiful. I love all of them, so good work. Thank you.
Councilmember Guthrie, any questions? And then Mayor Protem?
No questions.
And no questions from me. And no questions from me either. So I'll go ahead and open up public comment. Would anyone like to come forward on this item? Surprise, surprise.
No, I don't really have much to say. I'm Shirley Horacek. So I just wanted to say one thing. We were originally told as the public arts group that we were given a list of 16 boxes that we were able to paint. And on this round, we had only four. And I see it's been changed, and one's been deleted, and another one's been added. So my question would be, do we still have two more rounds after this of identified boxes that we can assume we get to put RFPs out for? So that would be my question.
And I'll ask it at the end of public comment.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for me? Thank you.
All right, any other questions? I mean, excuse me, any other public comment? Okay, seeing no one in house, we'll check in with the city clerk.
If any members of the public on Zoom would like to make a comment, please raise your hand. And there are no raised hands.
All right, so we'll close public comment, and let's go to the question of the speaker. It was my understanding there were 16 as well. So what happened to the others?
I think there are a total of 16. We would work with Public Works to make sure that we're identifying the additional utility boxes, and that we want to make sure there are eight additional utility boxes to, to be part of the project. But that was the understanding that there were a total of 16 boxes.
And, okay.
And I'll speak, I'll speak a little bit to the discrepancy. I think that there are two or three boxes that we are not 100% certain of whose jurisdiction they are. So between Grover and Pismo especially, I think that there's a little bit of question as to whose jurisdiction they fall into. So that's something that we're clarifying within Public Works, as Brian mentioned. But at this point, I think that when it comes to the next phase of the project, we will get that information solidified. And I do believe, I, I think 12 is the conservative number. 12 is the, the one, the number that we know for certain are within city limits. So those are certainly going to be painted. But for the remaining three or four, there's just a little bit of background that needs to be done before we can say for certain.
And would they potentially be able to come through with all of those at the same time?
Ideally, yes.
Okay, perfect. So rather than two more phases that could potentially be done in one?
Yes, that's the, that's the idea.
All right, great. Okay, so let's bring this back around to council for comment and consider, or consideration, and/or consideration. Let's go this way this time. Councilmember Guthrie, any comment?
I'm ready to move forward.
Councilmember Seacrest?
Great job, and great art, and ready to move forward. Thank you.
Councilmember George?
I just love them so much. I think they're so beautiful. And the four that we currently have, I smile every time I drive by them. So great work with collecting the art. I, I would like to see more artists apply. 650 were contacted, and we only got less than 10. So obviously, artists, they must have a lot on their plates. But hopefully, we can get more people to, to bring their talent forward, and I am definitely ready to move forward.
Mayor Proton?
Thank you. Absolutely ready to move forward. I love the, I love that we're doing this. It took us a while, but I'm glad that the city jumped on. And Shayna?
That's right.
Really good job on your presentation and your staff, your staff report. Thank you.
And you handled questions from council very nicely. So good job. And I just want to say thank you to Aurora Grande Public Art, because it is not us that's bringing this forward. It's Aurora Grande Public Art. They're the one that did the hard work. They're the ones that bring the project forward and do all that hustling. All we have to do is say yes. So I am hoping that someone will make a motion to that regard.
Madam Mayor, I'll move a resolution of the City of Aurora Grande, City Council of the City of Aurora Grande, except a donation of time and materials for the painting of utility boxes citywide, and waiving of encroachment permit fees, and finding the action exempt from SEQA, Staff Project 23-007. The location is citywide. The applicant is Shirley Horacek from Aurora Grande Public Art.
Second. Your motion is second, any discussion? All right, can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember George?
Yes.
Councilmember Seacrest?
Yes.
Councilmember Guthrie?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Barnage?
Yes.
Mayor Ray Bresson?
Yes.
All right. Takes us to item 10, excuse me, 11. We have no old business. Item 12 is new business. This is consideration of pre-application 23-003. It's a development code amendment to make educational facilities a conditionally allowed use in the regional commercial zoning district, and the applicant is Questa College. And I will, it says Pedrati, but I'm, I'm feeling something else, Perez. I don't know.
Yes, thank you, and good evening, Madam Mayor, mayors of council. I'm Andrew Perez, City's Planning Manager, and I'm here this evening to present the staff report, to have this discussion about a potential development code amendment to allow educational facilities in the regional commercial district. So just want to start off by explaining a little bit about the conceptual project. Questa College contacted staff notifying us that they identified a potential location in the Five Cities Center that could house a new South County facility for the college. Initial look at the facility would include up to five student classrooms. This would include study halls, traditional student classrooms, and potentially a lab, and other resources for students in our area. And this would replace the existing classrooms and facility that the college leases from the CMR School District there on Orchard Street, and really with the intent of improving the ability to provide, and flexibility to provide coursework and resources for students in South County. So the project site is the Pier, Old Pier One store location in the Five Cities Center. That tenant space is approximately 9,400 square feet, and is zoned regional commercial. It's located in the shopping center. It shares with access and parking with the other tenants, including Trader Joe's, PetSmart, and the Parable Bookstore, some other notable tenants. So the proposed use is classified as an educational institution by our municipal code, Section 16.04. Educational institutions are not allowed in the regional commercial zone, and in fact, they're only allowed in the public and quasi-public zoning district. Surely, the intent of our being here tonight is a discussion to gauge council's support of a code amendment that would allow educational institutions as a conditionally allowed use in the RC zone. Really, what we hope to get out of the discussion is some direction for staff and the applicant who will be considering filing an application for future action for the code amendment. The municipal code states that the intent of the regional commercial district is to provide areas for a diversity of commercial uses that serve community and regional needs for retail and personal services within distinctive and internally pedestrian-oriented shopping centers. Municipal Code Section 16.36.030 is the code section that establishes uses and the permit requirements for uses in all of our commercial and mixed-use zones here in the city. So with a future development code amendment would be amending this section to allow educational institutions in this zone. Additionally, all parcels in the RC zoning district have a land use designation of regional commercial as well. Land Use Element Policy 7-2 states that the purpose of this land use designation is to provide areas for retail and service businesses that serve the regional population. So we can think of these as your major retail commercial tenants, typically associated with regional malls, outlets, et cetera. So, which is how we end up with a Walmart, Office Depot, hardware stores up in that West Branch area. And so really, it comes down to at the bottom line for the regional commercial district is that it's intended to provide areas for businesses that generate tax revenue, usually through sales tax that contribute to the general fund. So the first step when considering whether to go forward with the development code amendment is looking at whether that amendment is consistent with the goals, policies, and programs of the general plan. So looking at this use, the school does not directly contribute to the general fund through sales taxes. However, it's presumed to be the case that it will bring students into the city from outside city limits that would dine and shop before and after class sessions. So it indirectly could generate sales tax revenue and be found to be consistent with the general plan. If council is supportive of a general plan amendment, we'd have to consider what the permit requirement for establishing this use. Conditional use permit is required to establish educational facilities in the public, quasi-public zone. And in general, CUPs are intended to apply to uses that have some special impacts or uniqueness that cannot be determined in advance of the project being proposed at a specific location. So therefore, staff recommends amending the code to allow, or if, if council's supportive of the code amendment, to allow educational institutions, institutions with the approval of a CUP in the zone. So an application for conditional use permit provides staff the opportunity to review the design and use, given considerations to project site, location, configuration and location of proposed improvements, and potential impacts associated with the built environment or the operations of that use. It also provides the opportunity to impose conditions on the physical elements or the operations in order to mitigate some of those potential adverse impacts. The municipal code authorizes the planning commission to approve conditional use permits with a recommendation from the staff advisory committee and the Architectural Review Committee in the event that exterior modifications are proposed or new buildings are proposed. City council would be asked to review conditional use permits, but only when an appeal is filed. So one aspect of every project that gets scrutinized is parking. Municipal Code Section 16.56 establishes parking rates for all of the uses allowed by the municipal code. Looking at educational facilities, it states that a parking rate is one space for each classroom and office, presumably for staff, plus five additional parking spaces for each classroom in the facility. So based on the conceptual project put together by Questa, the parking requirement would be approximately 33 spaces. And for the sake of comparison, the retail use requires one space for every 250 square feet of gross floor area. And for this 9,400 square foot space, that equals 38 parking spaces. Five spaces more than the educational institution use. So as we saw on the last slide, the applicant would be, would have a pretty easy time meeting their parking requirement with the existing parking facilities. However, staff anticipates that the actual parking demand would be higher than, you know, the parking than the municipal code says it would per the parking rate for this type of facility at this location. As I previously mentioned, being in a shopping center, this site shares parking facilities with the other businesses and tenants in this center. So the parking lot there has 341 parking spaces. The parking requirement of all the tenants, assuming no vacancies, and the proposed use is 273 spaces. So that results in a surplus of approximately 68 spaces to accommodate the anticipated use. And furthermore, in discussions with Questa staff, they indicated that should this get to the point where their operational, operations would start slowly and gradually build up to have a situation where there's no more than, or there's a maximum of 90 students at the facility at any one time. And then, as I mentioned, the benefit of a conditional use permit is that there's the opportunity to impose conditions related to parking that can be tacked on in the resolution. Some potential conditions include staggering of class times, limitations to the number of students or classes during peak demand times for parking, targeted education efforts for students, identifying areas where they should and should not be parking, and many more. And this could be a collaborative process that staff works with, with Questa staff to come to agreement and, and work on potential conditions if there's anticipated impacts. So other considerations that could be considered this evening. So the focus on the staff report and my presentation has been on educational institutions. But per the municipal code, this definition does not include trade and commercial schools. So if that's something that council thinks is an appropriate use in this zone, we'd ask that you give direction to staff explaining that. Think I look at where we go from here. We expect to have a discussion, and should council be supportive of this development code amendment moving forward? That would encourage the applicant to proceed with filing a formal application for the development code amendment that would allow educational institutions in the RC zone. That development code application would go to planning commission first for a recommendation, then back here to council for an introduction and adoption for that code amendment. If that's the case, and that code amendment is adopted and goes into effect, then staff and the college can process the CUP or whatever permit council finds appropriate to establish that use, and go forward from there. So that does conclude my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions if council has any.
Thank you very much. Let's ask council. Councilmember George, do you have any questions?
I don't really have any questions, more so just concerns that the parking is inadequate. And something that I had discussed with City Manager Robison is we can set the, there is a question in here. We can set guidelines, staggering classes, and, and the such. And my concern is how do we continue to enforce that? Because I could see with time, the staggering of classes might get lost in the administrative shuffle of a new semester and a new semester. And as time goes on, we kind of forget of, you know, why or how we got the CUP. So do we have anything that we could, could put into place that would help us with something like that? With, I, I don't want to say enforce, because that's not really the right word, but just to, to maintain the agreement of which the conditional use permit was approved upon.
Yeah, that's a very valid concern. Really, with any condition, it boils down to enforcement. Can, are you producing conditions that can be enforced and can be monitored over time? And to be frank, I don't know if staff has got to that point yet, because we're still really early in this process. So maybe if you have a little time to think about it. But at this point, I don't know if we have any concrete answer for you.
Okay. I, I appreciate that answer. That was a concrete answer. I appreciate that. That, I, I think for me, parking right now would be my number one concern. I, I do believe that parking lot is underutilized, even with the, the 273 spaces that are allocated. I know not all of those are used. They're, they're definitely underutilized, so I, I could see a shift with some numbers there. I just don't, I just, I'm just, kind of five classrooms, you think anywhere from 18 to 22 students, you know, per classroom, if they're all going at the same time, that's over 100 students. And we, it would be nice to say that public transportation is readily available, but knowing how our, our local society works, I think the majority of the people will probably be driving, and so that's more of a concern for me. So I'm interested to see what our, my colleagues have to say. Thank you.
Questions, Councilmember Seacrest?
Yes.
Questions?
Thank you.
Questions?
Thank you, Mayor. My question is... So my, so right now, this, the Questa South is located, or uses, utilizes buildings on AG High School campus, correct?
That's correct.
That's my understanding. So, sorry, not trying to cross-examine you. But...
But, oh, I should let the attorney know, because staff didn't, that Dr. Jill Sterns is here in the audience, so she can answer questions as well.
Okay, thank you. So I just, my question was just, I, my understanding is that parking does start to impact the residential areas right there by AG High School. And I'm just wondering if you've taken a look at that, or if you will be. I share Councilmember George's concern. My biggest concern is parking, and I definitely don't want to set up a situation that we're going to immediately have to start... that we're going to immediately have to start monitoring. And I'm very concerned that it not go out into the residence and things like that around the center. So, thank you.
Good job with the questions. Guthrie, you got any questions? Okay.
I apologize for not asking this in advance. So are there any commercial districts that we would allow a public school in? In other words, you know, in one is other than, well, other than what would be a public facility area? Is that the only place that a public school is allowed right now?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, that's my question. I have a lot of comments.
Good job, Councilmember Guthrie, gold star. Mayor protest?
I had practice.
I have a question. Well, okay, so I know we don't have, we can't talk about tax revenue because that's all confidential. But is there some sort of a, we haven't had any tax revenue because it's been vacant forever, so that's something. And I understand the offset of people spending money. But I guess, is there a comparison at all with the tax revenue we would generate if there was a business in there versus the tax revenue we're going to generate from those students spending money other places? I imagine it's, it's very, very different. Am I correct?
We don't have any analysis to support that, but I would, I think it's safe to make that assumption, yes.
And then, this might have been in the staff report or the presentation, but my other question is, the precedent that this would set, I guess that's more of a comment, never mind.
Your self-restraint is noted. Andrew, how long has Pier One been vacant?
Yeah, I want to say it's right around three years.
Okay. And I want to make sure I have my math right from the staff report. So your figuring of 273 spaces was being used out of 341 includes the proposed use right now under our parking requirements, right?
That's correct.
So then that would mean that if you took the 33 that our code would call for and added the extra 68, that's 101 parking spaces available, assuming full usage all the time, right?
That's correct.
Okay, so my numbers are right. And then, with regard to trade and commercial schools, I'm trying to envision what those would be. And are those for-profit institutions?
I think they typically are. So if you're thinking, you know, the trades, plumbing, HVAC, those type of programs where students would get certificates to go into those fields and those trades, I think that's what's intended by that definition of the code.
Okay. And I thought I had this straight, but the next steps confused me. Are the second and third bullets choices, as in, if we did a development code amendment, do they have to do a CUP? Or is it an either/or, or do they have to do both?
They would do both.
Okay.
So, yeah, there'd be separate paths. So development code would need to be amended to allow this as a conditionally approved use to allow staff to process the conditional use permit to establish the use.
So the development code amendment would come back to us, but the CUP would not unless Cuesta needed to appeal it from a planning commission denial?
Or someone else approved, or appealed the approval. But yes.
Got it. Okay, those are my questions. Oh, yes, ma'am.
Just one more question. Is, what is the reason why the Orchard Street classrooms are not as viable anymore?
Yeah, Dr. Sterns, come on up.
I do know they're only available after 4:00 PM. So this would provide more flexibility, but I'll let Dr. Sterns elaborate.
Okay, thank you.
The lack of availability during the day is really significant. And there is no parking on that side of Arroyo Grande High School with the exception of one very small lot. I don't know off the top of my head. I would say maybe in the neighborhood of 20 to 30 vehicles is all that it own. It would, it would hold. So that's substantial.
I appreciate that explanation. Thank you.
And I do want to add, and it's interesting that there's so much talk about parking. One of the things that we provide our students is RTA bus passes at no charge. And the ridership has increased significantly post-pandemic since we've been offering that. And we would anticipate, one of the things that's really appealing about this particular location is the access to public transportation. And we have plans to continue providing those bus passes and that students would take advantage of that.
Dr. Sterns, don't go anywhere. Come back. We have a couple of questions. Councilmember Guthrie?
Right, so this was kind of new to me that you're talking about doing education programs before, that really are night classes. I kind of read it as being night classes. So you're planning on doing daytime before 4:00 PM?
What we are proposing is an educational site. So I'm not going to use the term center because there's a requirement that we're serving 1,500 students for, to have that designation in our system. But an educational site where students could receive not only instruction, but all of the support services that they receive on the San Luis Obispo or North County campuses. So there would be counseling available, financial aid, assistance with application, registration, all of those wraparound kinds of services. They would have access to technology, they would have access to tutoring support. I'm guessing we would probably be closer to three classrooms rather than five. As I do the math in my head, I'm not sure if five fit in that space with accessible restrooms and all of the things that we're going to be putting in there. And really, we'll have a focus on some space for students to congregate and have a place where they are building that community of learners.
Okay, so just to clarify, no classes?
Yes.
Before 4:00?
No, we would have classes earlier.
Oh, you would? So you would have classes all day?
Absolutely.
I misheard that, okay. That clarification. And then when you talk about, I'm going to call it a student union, what kind of space are you talking about for that? Of your 9,400 square feet?
Probably somewhere in the neighborhood. And Brian, forgive me, I have my director of facilities is on Zoom. I'm going to say between 1,500 and 3,000 is going to be open, open design space.
All right, thank you.
And Councilmember George?
Thank you. The space that you have now by the high school, how many classes do you offer?
So it actually is the high school.
Okay.
We just use their classrooms after they vacate for the day. We lease those classrooms. And the number of classrooms we lease depends upon the offerings, that particular term. So it might, it might be three, it might be five. But again, we're only able to offer class from 4:30 to 9:00.
And will you continue to offer classes there even with this site open? No, you'll just move completely?
We will move completely. There's no, there's no space for offices and for providing any of those support services in the space we lease at the high school.
Thank you.
So the wraparound services you were speaking about, you don't currently offer them at the high school location?
We don't offer them out of an office. We have, we have staff that truly sit in the hallway.
Do you, and I appreciate very much the information about the bus passes. I think that helps a lot. But is this, this space is big enough for what you want to do? You must think it is.
It is.
But it just.
It really is. Because really, the key is the access to the services and having some courses available in person on site. We anticipate for the most part, they will be offered in high flex or hybrid models, where part of the time is in person and part of the instruction is available online. So we anticipate those models will be available. There's a possibility of using two-way video conferencing. We don't do that at Cuesta currently, but it's a model I'm familiar with at the other institutions I've been at. And so different ways, not necessarily that Monday, Wednesday, Friday from 8:00 to 8:50 model that is a traditional.
Great, thank you.
Mayor Proton?
I just have a question for staff.
I have a question for Jill.
Okay.
No, you go ahead and then I'll.
So I just, you mentioned the bus thing, this was actually going to come up on you. Have you talked to regional transit about, it's a heck of a hike from where the bus stops to where you're located, particularly if you use the one safe crosswalk, which is all the way down at Branch Street? So I wonder, have you talked to South County Transit about like some additional bus service or something?
So we have been trying to work with the property manager since about January of '23. We filed the pre-application permit in June, so I'm excited to be here tonight. We, before we can move forward in signing a lease, we need some sort of assurance that the city's even interested in this allowance for Cuesta College. And then, the anchor tenants of that property have a say-so, right? So we are a long way, we are a long way from being across the line. We have a very good relationship with RTA. We're investing heavily with them as we buy the passes for our students. And so, and we are working with them. We're building a new building in San Luis Obispo right now. And with that, we are relocating the bus stop. And they are our partner in that because we have shared, same sort of thing, shared concern about safety and the accessibility of that bus stop. And so I anticipate we would be doing the same if it, if it needs to happen at this location.
I have some comments, but I'll wait on that.
And I had a question, just real quick. At what time would you start classes? I mean, would you potentially have classes at 8:00 AM?
Potentially.
Okay, so.
It might even be earlier, right?
Right, so not necessarily at the time that businesses are open, that would be competing for the parking?
Right.
Got it. And then, with the hybrid option possibility, so students would be able to decide that day whether they wanted to drive to class or attend remotely?
So that's high flex, yes. In a hybrid, it's specific. Let's say one day a week, you meet for an hour in person and the other two hours are online. So it would depend upon which model the course is, whether the student could make a decision on a given day.
Is that up to the instructor?
It is.
So is that something that the city could partner? I don't know what the right word is. If those options are available for all classes, either high flex or hybrid or whatever your nomenclature was, that that has the potential to alleviate parking concerns?
So there is a very particular role for faculty in the development of the class schedule. And so there are, we're going to run potentially into some challenge if there are really inflexible requirements around what that can be. We are very cognizant of the parking challenge. And that's going to be a responsibility we have too to manage with the other tenants and with the lessor. So I think there's a lot there and that we would be working to really strategize what that, what that would look like. And I would think that any kinds of parking impacts are going to be way in the future. And part of what we are doing, we're considering this a mid-range plan. And we're working on a long-term plan at the same time. And what I really want to do is outgrow this site in a hurry. That's really the goal.
All right. Any other questions of Dr. Sterns? Okay, thank you so much. And you had a question of staff, Mayor Proton?
Yes, just a few questions. Andrew, could you put the site map back up, please, for a second? So I know you went over all the parking, but what I'm trying to determine is, you know, typically at Trader Joe's, the, all the parking that you can see right now that's taken is always taken. Like, that's kind of, that's where, if you don't want to park near anybody, you park in the area next to Pier One, near Pier One that is vacant. And even when it's not too busy, typically, though, that's kind of the spaces right there. So how many spaces are left, do we know? In kind of around, I know there's a little bit around the corner. And I don't know if it's in back too. And then right there, about, I'm just trying to, because to me, there's, you're not going to be able to park anywhere but those places potentially. So how many spaces? And you don't have to answer me right now. But then my other question is, and this is maybe a crazy idea, but I just thought of it. The owner of the shopping center, is it the same owner that owns this shopping center that owns the Walmart shopping center?
Yes, same ownership, same property manager.
Okay. So the ridiculous, silly parking that was required at the time behind Walmart, that there's never one person ever parked there and even almost next to Marshall's as you go around the corner. It's such a waste of space. It drives me crazy. And I feel like, would there, I know it's a hike, but, I mean, I was just in another country and everybody walks everywhere. So would it be crazy if there was a, something worked out where people could park over there in overflow? And then they'd have to walk a little ways, but so what? It's not, as long as it's, you know, not a safety thing and they can cross, they can cross safely across that, the crosswalk from?
Camino Mercado.
Yeah, that one. Because there's gazillions of spaces over there. So that, would that be a possibility that we could investigate?
Yeah, I think that's absolutely plausible. And it's discussions we would have with the applicant to see if maybe they have a better feel for whether their students would take advantage of that. And, you know, it could be part of the messaging in terms of educating students of where you should and shouldn't be parking. Like, parking's taken up here, that's your overflow, not the residential neighborhood to the north.
Okay, and then how, did you come up with the amount of spaces about, Andrew? While you were answering my second question, did you, did you find out the answer to my first question?
I actually have a little diagram here. It's approximately 65 spaces.
Oh, okay, so it's a decent amount. Okay, all right. Thank you for those answers.
Councilmember Guthrie?
So is there a crosswalk other than at Branch Street across Camino Mercado? Because it sure doesn't look like when you're making that.
No, there's not.
Could we install one?
Potentially.
In the middle of there? Sorry.
People are killing me with your comments before the comment period. Did you notice I asked a question? All right. Any other questions of staff? Questions of staff? We're getting punchy tonight. It's only 7:48. Let's go ahead and open up public comment. Would anyone like to comment on this item?
So these might be obvious, but I was wondering, is this a CUP for just that building or for all?
Remember, we'll answer the question, so go ahead and ask.
So my question is, is it a CUP for just that building or all the RCZ zoning buildings in Arroyo Grande? And then, can it be a time limit? Like, once they move out, then it goes back to having to reapply for a CUP? And then my other question was, if the owner's interested, obviously, in a business, you'd rather have another business there, you know, to bring more business in. But it sounds like they've already been talking with the owner of the strip center of that area. So those are my three questions.
All right. Would anyone else like to comment on this item?
Can I say one more thing? I think it's a great idea, by the way. I love the thought of getting this off of Orchard, which is a total disaster. So if this building didn't work, it'd be great to find somewhere else.
Thank you.
Hello. Yeah, I guess in regards with Orchard, I mean, AG High has like a huge parking lot on the other side. So I don't know if that's like a possibility. I know you guys have probably already talked about it, but. And I know that the. I know you guys have probably already talked about it, but and I know that the, I think the Questa classes are, they have like the nine hundred wing.
And if you would direct your questions here and we'll.
The nine hundred wing, which is kind of on the Orchard side, is it possible to have the classes over on the five hundred wing where they could park where the basketball court stuff is and then, you know, it's closer? I think there's a bus stop in front of that as well. And then, yeah, I think the bus passes are great. I guess where are the students coming from? Are they coming from Slow or AG or I don't, I don't know.
And we'll address all the questions, just keep on asking.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I don't know where they're coming from. If they're coming from Slow, then I guess, you know, the bus pass makes sense. If they're coming from AG, does that make sense? And then, yeah, I guess, why do we have a location in AG for Questa? And then, I guess, in regards to, yeah, I think I agree with Mayor Protem, the Walmart and Marshall parking spots, yeah, there's just like, they're just like nothing back there. And I guess my comment would be, you know, students coming late, there's no parking spots, they have to drive all the way over there, and then they walk and they get there like twenty minutes later or something, you know, so. Sorry, teacher, I was late, but yeah, that's the different, oh. The doctor had mentioned kind of that they're going to be outgrowing the site in a hurry. I'd be interested seeing like what their ideal site would look like, and if that's something that we have in this area. And also, back to the question, why a location in AG? I know their main hub is in San Luis, and so just seeing, yeah, are they doing AG to get more people kind of in the AG Napomo area to come to the school? And yeah, I'd just be curious. Thank you very much.
And anyone else?
One, one comment, one question that revealed how little I know about the area. The comment is, I do know that college students are good for public transit, partially because they're in a bit of a weird place scheduling-wise that makes public transit really easy to take advantage of. The other thing is, I see bank, grocery store, pet store, and I think Parable's a shoe or clothing store. Are there any eating places in walking distance of this proposed site? That's what I've got.
And I think that takes care of those in-house, so let's check in with the city clerk.
If any members of the public on Zoom would like to make a comment, please raise your hand. And there are no raised hands.
All right, thank you. So we'll close public comments. So there's two sets of questions, so I'll start with staff. And in general, there were several questions about the CUP. I think it's just probably best to give kind of a high-level overview of what the CUP process is, and that will answer those questions.
Yeah, absolutely. So each site in which a educational institution would be proposed would need to process its own conditional use permit. So processing one for Questa wouldn't, doesn't allow every building in the regional commercial zone to become an educational institution. It is a discretionary process, so that means staff needs to make a number of findings in the affirmative that, you know, the conditional use permit can be approved and make that recommendation to the planning commission who's ultimately tasked with approving or denying that application. The entitlement, the conditional use permit approval runs with the land, so should this be entitled as a educational institution and Questa vacates, it would still be eligible to become another educational institution until the next land use entitlement is processed.
And this isn't really something we can comment on, but the question was, wouldn't the owner of the land want a business there instead? We don't really have any control over that, but I don't know if you wanted to comment on that.
It's really hard to say without having those conversations with the property owner, the leasing agent.
And finally, are there eating places around?
Not in this immediate shopping center. You know, previously, there's a Chili's and a Baja Fresh, which are now gone. Across the street, there's Palomesa Pizza. I think there's a Wingstop now, In-N-Out, so but that's across Rancho Parkway.
Urbain Cafe, Starbucks. None of us had dinner yet, thanks so much, Alexander, for that.
Movie theater popcorn.
Okay, and the other questions are for Dr. Sterns. So Dr. Sterns, if you wouldn't mind coming back to the podium, I'm going to ask you to be relatively brief, because this isn't a hearing about Questa's plans, but it it does give you the opportunity to talk about why a Arroyo Grande. So I'm going to give you the questions that the gentleman asked, and maybe if you could just sort of keep your comments brief. So the questions were, and I'll preface, what's possible at AG? Just to be clear, we don't have any jurisdiction over the school district, so those questions would not be answered here in any case. Who's coming or who do you anticipate coming to the site? Why here? And what's your perfect world? What's your ideal site? In thirty words or less? No, I'm just kidding.
Yeah, that's that's a big one. So we lease what Arroyo Grande High School is willing to make available to us. So there, we don't, we don't have an option of other of other spaces.
They're coming from?
They are coming from the Five Cities area in Napomo primarily, from Santa Maria in some cases, but really, it is local, and the why is because key to our mission is access. And we accept the top one hundred percent of applicants. And with gasoline priced like it is, although I heard today in California, we're down to five forty-one a gallon. And you think about what it takes to get from here to this San Luis Obispo campus, which is actually halfway between Slow and Morro Bay, and the challenge of the Straits and what that looks like. We have a a real obligation to make education as accessible to our community as we can. And in order to do that, we need to have, be providing the same level of services and access in South County as we are the other parts of our service area.
And your perfect world, what's your ideal site?
Our ideal site is that we need to be on a transportation corridor, we need to be easily accessible. If if we had grown here to the point where we were looking for a piece of, a larger piece of property to establish a a permanent campus, we could be further off of the freeway. But to, in order to get there, we need to be where people are falling over the top of us. We need them, when they, when they go out to do their grocery shopping, they need that reminder, that visual reminder, oh, yeah, Questa's right here. And to really start to build that into the the thinking. And our intent really is to be reaching those individuals who are working full-time. And at the end of that workday, just the thought of having to drive to San Luis Obispo is keeping them from pursuing the education that they really desire.
All right, thank you very much. So let us bring this back to the council, and I so rarely do this, but I'm going to take the chair's prerogative to go first rather than last tonight. I don't think it's any big secret that I'm a huge proponent of not only this, but of Questa College in particular, having attended Questa College and owe so much to the institution. The role of a community college in the community, it's right in the name, right? It's a community college. And we have had the luxury in this center, not only on this side, but on the Walmart side, to be a regional draw. And this is part of that. And I think it's a really important piece of that bridge for everyone to get to a more promising future. And getting to, I mean, my family, we all went to Questa, my kids went to Questa, getting to and from is a big deal. That's not going to San Luis, it's essentially going to Morro Bay. And that that's a big hurdle, without a doubt. And I know for a fact this will be well-received. With regard to foregoing potential sales tax, the vacancies in that center are, they abound right now. And I don't think we're foregoing anything, if anything, we're drawing in, much like an anchor tenant would do. Between that, a couple of vacancies in, near the Parable and the Chili's building, we need life there, we need students there, we need people there. I think that's just an easy, an easy judgment to make. And when we look at, this is a service, that is a regional service. It fits the regional commercial designation in its verbiage. It just doesn't necessarily meet the implied necessity of sales tax. And I do think there'll be a bump otherwise. There is no way my kid's going to go to a class and not hit In-N-Out on their way, without a doubt, or anything else over there. The fact that we have regional shopping near it makes this a very attractive site. I think there's, it meets the regional, the regional commercial description pretty easily. I think there's an argument to be made that we will recapture lost sales tax in something like this. Because, again, if I am taking a class at Questa, I'm going to San Luis, I'm going to be going to do my shopping and doing my eating in San Luis Obispo if I live in South County. Now, we give the opportunity to have people from South County be educated in South County and keep those tax dollars here. So I think there's an argument to be made that there's, there's a a lost leakage benefit there. With regard to the parking, I think, you know, the overhead that's still on the board here shows, there is a real delineation between what's used and what's not. And there is a reality that there is unused parking there, and nobody is going to park right in front of Trader Joe's or what used to be Baja Fresh to access the Questa building, if that's the one in the back. There there really is going to be a division there. So I I do not share the concerns, the the deep concerns about parking. I believe that there is, that's why I clarified that there really was a hundred and one total there that are usable, three classrooms worth of twenty kids in each classroom, that's sixty plus some staff. Who knows what that number will really be, but it's in everybody's best interest to make sure that that works, including Questa's. Having, again, walked many, many times from the parking lots to various locations on Questa's campus, I can tell you that there are parking lots further away than Marshall's. So I appreciate Mayor Protem's comment to that regard, that there really is plenty of parking within walking distance. It's just requires a flip of thinking to make that accessible. That can certainly be suggested and amplified as a message from Questa College itself, as to say that there is available parking across Rancho Parkway. So I think that I would, I mean, obviously, I absolutely support a Development Code Amendment and a CUP for this. I think it's incumbent upon this council to bring facilities like this to the South County. We have a great opportunity to do that. There are some hurdles here, but there is no, nothing that is not mitigatable, nothing without mitigation, there's nothing that can't be solved with a partnership with Questa College. And I would very much hope that the council would consider approving a Development Code Amendment process and this CUP for this, for this use. I would not, however, be in favor of extending that to trade and commercial schools. I think there is a significant difference between a community college and a for-profit institution. So at this time, I would only support moving forward with an educational facility in terms of the Development Code Amendment. So with that, I will turn it over to our esteemed colleagues, and who would like to go first? All right, Councilmember George, thank you.
I can make comments now.
You can make comments anytime, apparently. No, just kidding.
Okay, so I'll start with education is really important, and access to education is very important. And the partnership that Arroyo Grande High School, specifically because that's my experience and I can speak to that, the partnership that Arroyo Grande High School has with both Hancock and Questa in helping our high school students elevate their education so that when they prepare to go to college, they're already ahead of the game, is invaluable. So having a campus close by where these high school students now don't have to drive, because a lot of them are new drivers, all the way up to the Slow campus is definitely beneficial. I think that the the Questa College program is only going to get better. I I saw that we're trying to go for a bachelor's program, and if that happens, then, like you said, you want to hopefully outgrow this space. And I I can see that happening as more and more students go to college. That being said, three classrooms sounds a lot more appealing to me than five, but as you grow, it'll probably be five, because we always maximize our space until we can't maximize anymore. So I would like to hope that it would stay at three, but I'm under no delusion that you're going to use your space as best you can use it. I appreciate that it'll have wraparound services. I didn't think that that was on the table. I probably missed it when I was reading it. So having wraparound services is huge, because when a student in the Five Cities or in Napomo or Santa Maria has to see a counselor, that's a heck of a trek all the way out to to Slow. So I appreciate those services being offered. I definitely think there can be findings that shows that this project would be consistent with the general plan, as as staff has has stated in in the staff report, and I agree. I I would encourage this project to continue to work with RTA and Transit Services to either add a second stop or or move the stop, as Councilmember Guthrie had had talked about. I do think that having access that's super readily available is is always appealing to students. I do have concern about parking. Looking at that map, three classes, not a big deal, five classes, maybe, depending on if they're all at the same time. But my bigger concern above parking, which I've already stated, is I would like to, and I should have asked, and I apologize for not asking, it's not a question I'm going to ask now, but just something for staff to think about, is if we're going to be doing a traffic study right around eight AM in the morning and two thirty, really now it's starting at two in the afternoon, that Brisco interchange is terrible, and those cars back up all the way to In-N-Out. So now, if we're adding Questa College students into that mix, how far back are we actually going to be going? And because we're not moving forward with Brisco as a solution and we're keeping it the way it is, I can, I can see that that could be a potential problem if we don't head it off. So that's something to consider and possibly work with the college to maybe mitigate just those times and maybe not offer, you guys can figure that out, but that is a concern of mine with that Brisco interchange. Let me see. Yeah, I I think that it definitely is a project that is worth pursuing, and if I'm still on council and it gets here, I'll have questions, but as of now, I'm definitely in support of the project moving forward, and and it's worth worth more investigation. So thank you.
Councilmember Seacrest?
Thank you. So I'm really enthused to see Questa serving students from our area, and as, I just agree with the comments that have already been made in terms of the length of the trip to get up to Questa is really like driving to Morro Bay. And not only is it long, but for those that don't have, even have vehicles, then they have the whole bus ride or trying to work that out. I'm fairly reass, I'm concerned about the parking, but I'm fairly reassured after hearing, you know, more information. I think the idea of utilizing extra space behind Marshall's is great, and and it is not as far as some of the treks that you do on the Questa campus anyway. So I appreciate the wraparound services as well, those seem like they're really crucial and can be really helpful. I do agree, it fits, it seems like it fits the general plan, and I would support Development Code Amendment with the CUP. And I agree with working with RTA, as which, as it sounds like, of course you are, to make the bus stop safer and more convenient. Thank you.
Councilmember Guthrie?
I guess I'll be taking a slightly different tack here. Surprise, surprise. No, actually, so so first off, I I do think it's a great thing to be bringing a Questa campus to to this area. And I also think that it's something that particularly part of our general plan process we should be looking at is. we should be looking at is, is how we can reallocate commercial space. Lots of commercial spaces can become available, I think in the next 10 years, to other purposes. The problem I, I have here is, one, this is a project-specific code amendment. And I, I just don't like those. I mean, they often have unintended consequences. I think the unintended consequence here could very well be that we're telling this ownership here that it's likely they can come in and get significant changes and, and not have to go out and find a retail, a, a retail use for other openings. I don't know if you guys remember, but they still can build more space over there. As I remember, and I, I maybe remember wrong, their development agreement actually limits the amount of non-retail space they can have. So I'd like to say, I have a specific commitment here that, oh yeah, here we do this whole, we, we move forward with this, and then they outgrow it in two years. And so with this, if this was a one-time deal that went away with the CUP, that, that there was no expectation that they would expand to the rest of the regional center, then I, I think I could see going forward somehow with this. I don't-
Can you, can you explain that a little bit more? I don't understand what you're saying.
So we wanted to be clear that you're not going to come in and get a CUP for maybe having a more school space on the other side, or more school space here, or some other similar use. Granted, it's fairly narrow, because it's a public school that we're talking about, not a private school. But, so if it was a one-time deal, that, that, that's the problem I have. Here we are going into a general plan amendment process, this would be the perfect time to be dealing with that. And yet, here we are dealing with it as a project. I, I have, I have trouble with that. I do actually think that this is not a great location. I understand the desire to have a highly visible campus. But I look at Brisco as an example. We really, if you look at climate action and all those kinds of processes, everything says this should be on the other side of the freeway. And I know I'm arguing, you know, that it's imperfect and therefore can't be done, but this really should be accessible from the other side of the freeway where you could bike, you couldn't consider, you could bike here, but you, you better be a pretty serious militant biker to, to bike in this area. And I, I, the reason I asked whether they've actually talked to RTA, everything I look at here where you could run a bus through here is a very awkward route for the RTA. And to put a bus stop in here, you would have, you would have to give up parking spaces. And I don't, I, I don't see the major tenants agreeing to give up this parking space for the bus to pull, to, to pull out to do its drop-off. So I, I don't know that that's, that's realistic, that this is going to be a good public transit location on this side. If it was on the other side, absolutely. But on this side, I don't think it'll be a good public transit. I personally think the parking would work. But not because I think a parking on Marshall's is a good idea. The rest of the neighborhood would be way more attractive than Marshall's is. You have to march all the way back down, you have to cross a dangerous, frankly, it's a dangerous place to drive, let alone walk. And we're going to put a bunch of 18-year-olds, 18 to 25-year-olds in here, they're all going to run across that road and hopefully not get hit. If we, I don't believe we could put in a crosswalk safely there unless we signalize that, that spot. So I don't see that. I, I think that if there was overflow parking, it would actually go up into the neighborhood. Because if you look right there under that subject site, that's far more attractive. Particularly, I remember the, the immediate neighbors here, they complained that people would walk down his driveway in order to get to the lower part of the hill so they could run, run down into the shopping center and go up and down and go through his driveway. So I just don't think, granted, I, I go back and forth in this, because, you know, let's not let the, perfectly be the enemy of the, of the project. But I, 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 I just think that in the long run, they're much better. Now, the fact that they want to outgrow this is, it's good and bad, you know? That means they're going to be looking for some other space, hopefully in the Five Cities area, but maybe not, to, to expand into. The fact that they are doing classes before four o'clock and all day long, I think complicates the, some of the parking equation. For instance, if you look at the, where the little half circle is, that parking lot over by, I think it's an investment.
Wells Fargo.
Wells Fargo is, is full. If it was a night, it'd be empty. I've always thought initially that hardly anybody parks in the Chili's parking, including me, parked farther away, just so you don't have to go through the bushes, I guess. But, so I'm, I, I actually think that for what they're proposing, 90 students, if that's really what it was, 90 students at any given time, that it would probably work out, just the mechanics of it. I do, on parking, I do have one concern here, and this is something that 33 spaces may be okay for a high school, but 33 spaces where you potentially have 90 adult students is not enough parking. And I know we're going to be looking, looking at parking probably minimums as part of our general plan process. And I assume most of them are going to get reduced, but here's one where probably we do need to think about increasing it if we're going to. If this was a standalone, I don't think, and we, they had 33 spaces, and we're saying they're going to bring 90 students down, they'd be all over the neighborhood. So I, I just think that's something we do need to look at. Walmart, 4 P. M. 33, bus service. The other deal is, is that it struck me, is it, is, is this is not a particularly expandable site. And I, rather than go and find another location, may very well be that they're looking for 10 classrooms. And could it then, you know, if, if one of these other, let's, let's say Petsmart decided that they were going to leave, which I'm not sure is quite so impossible, but then would that be an expandable site? And how, how would that parking work and, and those kind of things? I, I just don't think we've, we've thought this through enough. And I know it actually comes back, and it may very well be, but we are, we are going to make a significant change to how we believe our regional center should operate, because we're going to allow a, a, a whole different use in there. And, and I'm, I'm struggling with, with that. What was my other point? Oh, I, I think we're talking about, it's, it's going to be very difficult to micromanage this and say, oh, you're only, you're going to instruct your students to park here and they're not going to park in the neighborhood, or you're, we're going to reduce the, the size of classes or control exactly when they go based on the track we think is going through Brisco. I think that'd be incredibly difficult for us to micromanage. And, and likely, as soon as there was the opportunity, they would be back saying, well, you know, we, we need to be able to expand our services. And we'd likely say, okay, we'll, we'll vacate that rule. Or it would just fall away like many things do. So I, I guess as a general direction, I, I just not comfortable about moving forward at this time. I could see us looking at this as far as the general plan process and other uses completely and in other commercial zones. That's why I asked about other commercial zones. I think there are better locations for this. For instance, my understanding that the, the old mid-state bank corporate headquarters is empty right now, and it's been for a while. I'm sure we will have, you know, if, if all they need is 33 spaces, you know, the Oceana Community Center, there are other potential places where maybe this could take place. And once we go in this direction, they won't, that, that, like I say, are much more accessible. So those are my thoughts. Thanks.
Mayor Protam?
Thank you. Let's see. Okay. So I'm, I'm warming to the idea of having an educational institution in the shopping center, not a for-profit school. So I'll just go there first. I, I guess I struggle with the, you know, that was kind of in the heyday. That was a commercial center that produced a lot of tax revenue, and a lot of people were up there shopping. And that's kind of what EG has. We don't really have a lot of other spaces for these big commercial tenants. So, so I struggle with giving that up. But on the other hand, I feel like the retail market and the commercial market has changed so much with the online atmosphere and COVID. And I just don't know really what it's going to go back to. Because even in, in all cities across the nation, I mean, there's huge swaths of commercial spaces that are just not, they can't find tenants anymore. And so sitting here and hoping that we're going to get commercial tenants and telling the landlord or the land, the owner to find someone, I'm sure he's been trying to find someone, because he's subsidizing this huge, all these vacancies, Baja Fresh is vacant, Chili's has been vacant forever. And so I just, I don't, I don't know if we're going to get back to what it was 10 years ago, seven years ago. So, so I am open to this. I, I do think the classes would have to be staggered. I don't see how you fit. I do think people are going to take the bus. I think the kids that go to Questa will take the bus. I don't think many of them will walk here, even though I'm sure a lot of them will be from South County. So I do foresee a parking issue. And let's not, let's not pretend that the neighborhood that's adjacent isn't going to immediately come unglued when there's one car in their neighborhood that they don't recognize, because there's no cars on the street in that neighborhood. They're all parked in their driveway and in their garages. I mean, and, and the street is, is, is public property. I mean, so, so that's not, that's not to say that maybe they couldn't park in that neighborhood. So, so we're going to have to have some, some rules. And then the whole rules worry me, because staff does not have time to micromanage the parking, and the neighbors will be calling. And then, you know, same with the Aurora Grande Police Department. So I, I just, that neighborhood is probably going to be parked in, and that's going to be an issue. So I don't know how we mitigate that. Staggering classes might help, because we see the vacant parking. I went to Questa, and I will tell you, it was so painful. It's a 30-minute drive to Questa College. And when you have that one class that you need at 7:00 at night or something, it's just terrible to have to drive there. It's just, you just say, oh, I just don't think I'm going to go. So I do think that, that this would be, I mean, I would have loved to have Questa Colleges this close to where I live. What else? I mean, I, I, I think I'm just, I think I'm more for it than not. I think it's, it's worthy of more discussion. Just, I think I'm, I think if the retail market was what it used to be, I would not be in favor. But I think because it's changed and we do have so many vacancies, I would be open to more discussion. Thank you.
So to bring this back around, you do not need a motion tonight. This is just direction to staff. And I feel like you've gotten kind of a four-to-one direction right now. Is that, did you get the information that you need this evening?
Yes. We got, we've got quite a bit of information. We'll use that, we'll use the information to deliberate as staff and then work with Dr. Sterns and her team. And yes, there, there are some, some issues that we need to iron out further, and that's kind of what the process of the permit is for. And we'll get into those, those issues of, of parking and the parking impacting the surrounding areas and the businesses. And we'll, we'll start to narrow that down so we can give your council more information. And when the permit comes through and the zoning of the-
Development Code-
Development Code Amendment comes through, we'll have some, some better answers and a better understanding of how the actual operations is going to work.
Great. And Mr. Perez, you're good?
Yes, thank you.
All right. Sounds good. Okay. So that concludes item 12A. So that takes us to item 13, Council Communications. Councilmember Varnich or Mayor Protam? Pardon me? Yeah.
Oh, to online public.
Yeah, we did.
We did?
Yeah. It was a flash. So, okay. Mayor Protam, nothing for community comments?
I have nothing.
Or Council Communications, excuse me? Council Communications?
Yes, just very briefly. I'm, I don't think we brought this up at the last meeting. If we did, I'm going to say it anyway. Thank you so much for all your work, Councilmember Guthrie, on the Harvest Festival. That was fabulous. My first one, I worked the booth, got to talk to a lot, very adorable children, and also very nice folks from out of town, and got to do a little spiel to some local residents about, we need money, so we have a tax initiative we're thinking about. And so, anyway, it was very cool. And just the atmosphere was really fun, the band was great. There was just a really diverse group of people, all enjoying themselves. I thought the restaurant setup and with the lights and everything was very cool. So thank you.
Aw, you made him blush. Lots of community stuff coming up in the next couple of months. So Halloween in the Village and all the other fun stuff through our Parks and Rec. And then we've got Christmas stuff coming. I'll be asking you for some donations for snow here coming up soon. And so this is the best time of the year, everybody. We will look forward to seeing everyone in a couple of weeks, so let us be adjourned.